I will call it the thirteenth school committee meetings, the 2019 school committee meeting to order in the first order of business is for our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to read our mission statement. Okay. The Davis Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. At this time, we will have the school committee reorganization, and the first order of business is to elect the new chair.
Madam Chair, I nominate Mary Beth Ferry for chair of the school committee.
It doesn't require a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you. So we're going to, congratulations, Mary Beth. Congratulations, Mr. Schomis for being, yes, we're going to shift their seats for just one moment. And that Mr. Schomis was also reelected to our school committee, so looking forward to our next school year.
I know. There should be some ceremonial passing of the gavel.
Yes.
You should have the band come on play next year.
No, really. That'd be funny, the whole band.
Have to do it over again. Start again, start again.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Arthur, for your service last year, and congratulations.
Thanks.
So now, we are, the next order of business would be to elect a secretary of the committee.
There.
Madam Chair, and I would like to nominate Eric Crane as secretary.
Right. So, again, we don't need a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so.
Are you sure you guys don't want to switch?
Yeah, I know.
Can we do backup secretary?
Yeah, exactly. What else do we have left?
All right. So, now, the next order of business would be looking for, is it a motion for appointing an attorney?
Madam Chair, I would move that we appoint Michael Long and the firm of.
Long and DePietro.
Long and DePietro. I knew that before, to continue being the school attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Dana, would you be able to check the liability insurance to make sure it's all up to date?
We will do that. Yes, thank you.
And establishing a time and place for a regular meeting day. I believe we're the second Monday of the month at seven o'clock here. Does that still work for everyone?
Good for me, yep.
Okay. Great. Also need to authorize a member of the committee to be a primary and actually a secondary signer on the bill sheets. Currently, Arthur, you want to continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
I love that.
And we'll need a secondary signer.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And then, a legislative liaison. Eric, would you like to continue that?
I would.
Okay.
If it's agreeable to the committee.
Anyone else?
Yep, that's good.
Great. I think next month, we will assign committee assignments or liaisons, so if you think between now and the June meeting, if there's a particular committee you'd like to serve on or move to, let me know, and we'll do that next month, okay? All right. So now, items of interest to the superintendent, school committee, or the community.
Superintendent, I am all set this evening. Thank you.
Great. School committee?
All set.
All set.
I did want to offer the school committee's condolences to our colleague, Dave Thompson, on the loss of his brother. And the service was today. Dave gave a wonderful eulogy, so our thoughts are with Dave and his family. And also wanted to take a minute to remember a teacher that was here when we were here, Arthur, Earl Clay, who passed away. And I see Dick Moody here. Earl was a World War II veteran, I want to say Dick, and then served ably as a teacher and administrator in the Danvers schools, and was by all accounts a wonderful guy.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
The community? Any? Nope. And I think, I was just, is anyone recording tonight's meeting? Okay. Very good. All right. Information from the superintendent.
Thank you. So tonight, we have Clear and Cynthia that will give us an update from our seven schools.
Sounds good.
So, at Great Oak, our second graders are becoming amazing writers. They are writing opinion stories about their favorite book. Each writer was able to choose the book they would recommend. They are including quotes from the text to support their opinions and are using descriptive language in their writing. Our third graders are working to solve multi-step word problems in math using numbers up to the thousands. Students have to use several different math strategies and are able to share their thinking with classmates. Strategies include counting on, making tens, and breaking numbers apart. Fourth graders are using division ladders to practice long division.
At Highland, the fourth grade students are researching about the Revolutionary War as part of their reading and writing workshops. Through the use of primary sources, books, and technology, the students are fully engaged in their learning and will produce a four-chapter American Revolution book as their culminating task. This is a chance for them to be all about the American Revolution, a summary of an event of the American Revolution, Battle of Bunker Hill or the Boston Tea Party are two examples, a historical fiction narrative story and a literary essay. On April 30th, Highland had their annual Evening of the Arts in which they featured over 2,000 pieces displayed in the hallways for all families to come and enjoy. This year, the theme was "Under the Ocean." Families had the opportunity to engage in folk dancing in the gym with Mr. Gall. Once again, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Gall made this evening one that we will remember for years to come.
At Riverside, starting the week of March 22nd and during their SEL time, Riverside's fifth graders worked closely with Ms. Silva, Ms. Powers, and classroom teachers on courageous conversations. Courageous conversations include topics about culture, race, stereotypes, and discrimination. Lessons were researched and prepared from the Teaching Tolerance website. Through Teaching Tolerance, teachers are able to use material to inform and create civil and inclusive school communities where children are respected and valued. Fifth graders had open and honest conversations in a safe environment and were able to express themselves and ask mature questions. These conversations not only supported the work around social-emotional learning, but are necessary and important as fifth graders enter HRMS and become part of a larger school community.
As part of the third grade reading unit at Smith, the students are researching the geography, music, art, customs, food, and history of a country. The final product will include a brochure or a commercial that encourages others to visit their country. The third graders are very engaged in this project and can't wait to share with their peers. The kindergartners are learning about community helpers. Today, Officer Baldassari came to speak to them. He shared the role of the police officers in the Danvers community. He made all the kindergartners honorary junior officers. They took an oath and received a badge. It was an exciting day at Smith.
At Thorpe, the fifth graders have recently completed the opinion writing unit of study. As part of their end-of-year assessment, they were asked to write an opinion about the use of Blizzard bags on snow days. Should the district adopt the use of Blizzard bags or just have an old-fashioned snow day to play and feel like they had a real day off? The students were split 50-50. Each group came up with some strong reasons stating their opinion. Maybe it will be a topic for the school committee to decide one day. And they are excited about the change in venue for this year's art show. On May 21st, it will be in the Learning Commons. Thanks for the generosity of Thorpe's PAC, we were able to purchase portable display boards to mount the beautiful student artwork. In addition, various art projects will be displayed on tables and poster boards throughout the area.
At Holton Richmond, with the help and support of the DCAT, filmed its second annual lift-dub, the entire faculty and student body helped produce and perform a music video filled with teamwork and positive school messages. Students in John Hodgson's Grade Six Science class collected data about the salt marsh adjoining Plains Park as part of the collaboration with Mass Audubon and Boston University. And through the generous support of the 2018 DEEP grant, students conducted fieldwork to collect baseline data about the current state and health of the salt marsh, which will be used to compare with the data that will be collected by students in subsequent years to help scientists at the stated universities measure the rate of salt marsh erosion.
At Danvers High School, our senior students interested in pursuing a STEM career were honored at the STEM showcase and STEM signing at WPI recently. Students presented class projects and work, signed on to their college, similar to the tradition of collegiate athletic signing days. We were having trouble.
I know. We're really having a difficult day. I'm sorry, guys.
And the annual spring concerts were held in late April at Danvers High School. In a great example of project-based learning, students applied the skills of perseverance and collaboration in putting on another fabulous set of performances.
Woo! Thank you. I think we're going to chuck it up to this weather. We really need that sunshine to come back for all of us. This was the first year that we have two students, two student reps, a junior and a senior, presenting and learning about the school committee work, being able to work with us on policy, which we added this year, and then being able to be advocates in looking for the information about students and what were happening in our schools with our students. So, they work with Dr. Columbino and have taken that on on their own to be able to have these presentations and be able to share this with our community, with our school committee. So at this time, Clear is moving on because she is a senior.
No, 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 you're confused.
Yeah. Cynthia will be back with us, and that's a nice transition. So, we do have a thank you gift for Clear.
Oh.
Oh.
Your name. I know.
Oh, you get to take your name, too, yes.
I have this with you. And congratulations. Hard work this year. Thank you very much.
This is so cute. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's been really fun. It's a really great experience to see kind of the background work of school because I don't think a lot of students understand how much this impacts us. So it's really great to be able to see that.
Thank you. And Clear has definitely been a leader, thinking about our strategic plan and students' choice and students' voice and her advocacy for having all of our students matter at Davis High School. So, thank you.
Thank you, Clear, very much. And she does this in addition to all her AP courses and a member of her a cappella group, Ingrid Sound, and in the theater, and all the other groups, Model UN. So again, thank you very much for doing it. Thank you, Cynthia, as well. Great job this year, and we look forward to seeing you next year.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good. Okay. Next, we have information from the superintendent. And with our seven schools, over the 11 months that we do have our meetings, we have our Davis Pride presentations. Amazingly, it's already May, so we're at our last school for this year, and it is our Smith Elementary School. So I'd like to welcome our principal, Tracy Marr, and she has brought members of her school community to present today.
Thank you so much for.
I think you'll be able to, I think it will be to hear you.
Thank you so much. I'm loud enough. So, thank you so much for having us. You know, we get this email in the fall, and I figured, May would be a beautiful night, and here I'm pulling out, you know, a sweater and boots. So, thank you for having us and actually following on the heels of the high school. We're very, very excited. Over the last three years at Smith, we've really been interested in the project-based learning model, and I think it fits really well when we're thinking about the new Smith School with the collaboration opportunities for students to become drivers of their own learning with the risk-taking. And when I was thinking about this presentation, I wanted to just set the context for this sort of official definition for project-based learning, and it talks about really having the learning come alive for students. It talks about students work on a project for an extended period of time, whether that's a week or a semester, that engages them in solving a real-world problem or answering a complex question. They demonstrate their knowledge and skills by developing a public product or presentation for a real audience. And the nice piece is, I have Hannah Albright, second grade teacher, Stacy DePama, who was second grade last year, and they partnered together in this year, fourth grade. We also have our wonderful music teacher, Mr. Vee, and this is an example of collaboration between regular ed classroom teachers, but also the specialists. So it's a really nice opportunity to see what was done, starting three years ago, last year, and currently this year. And we have a wonderful student representative, Sebastian, who's here to talk about his music project. So we're excited, and with that, I will turn it over to the team. We have a video and slideshow for you.
Thank you. We believe that all students can produce high-level work, and we find that through our learning contracts, we adapt them based on the grade level and the content that we're teaching. We're seeing some really good results. So, what is project-based learning through our lens? It's really intended to teach content and skills and concepts that we teach all of our students. That being said, it really requires critical thinking, collaboration among colleagues, among peers, where they're getting some feedback to improve their project, and also having a growth mindset, like you're off to a really good start, here's, you're not there yet, maybe you can work on revising this part. And then also allowing students to have choice as to how they want to present their information based on the individual tasks. And it's really meaningful to students when they know that they're presenting it to younger learners or an author that came to visit our school or their parents, not just the teachers that they see every single day.
So one of the big questions that a lot of teachers face is, how can I make this fit in already very full schedule? We have a lot of curriculum. And so, a couple of ways that we've used it is as a culmination of a literacy unit. So we have the Lucy Calkins reading and writing workshop models, and the final lesson in each of those units is a celebration. And so what we've done is often extend that one lesson over the course of a few days, give them a chance to not just have one day to sort of show what they've learned over the course of the past five to 10 weeks, depending on the length of the unit, but really give them a chance to develop a product that they can be proud of and present. This would also allow us to directly evaluate the skills that they've learned throughout the unit. So it gives the purpose of evaluation for the teacher's standpoint, but also that chance for them to synthesize the information that they've been learning the past few weeks. We've also used them as math extensions, so when they have worked on a unit for a certain amount of time, a way to sort of extend the learning that they've been doing, challenge them, give them a chance to think of it in a more of a real-world context rather than just in my workbook or a game that I'm playing with a peer. And then also a way to integrate technology, and you'll see that later with the music presentation, and also integrating multiple content areas. So, we'll show an example in a few minutes of a reading unit project that they did, but there was also math involved in that and writing. So, you can kind of hit multiple content areas at once.
So, a big question is, what is in for my students? So, I feel that it's very powerful giving students a choice. When I asked all my students, even more reluctant learners, you know, what, you're really into this, he's like, well, I got to choose how I showed my understanding. And they really become very creative with the different ways that they do present the information that they are learning. And they're, we're really getting into those higher-level thinking skills where they're applying what they know, they're analyzing someone else's work, evaluating, and also creating. Again, opportunities for students to collaborate and give feedback. That's a big part of the process, and it really allows all of them to produce higher, high-level work. And again, the choice of how they communicate their understanding is different based on every student.
So what does this look like? In the lower grades, this is an example of one of the learning contracts that Stacy was mentioning. So, the way that this was presented to students was in a menu format. So on one side, they had their main dishes, which were the things they must do, like you must eat your dinner before you do other things and have dessert. So for this unit, it was the end of the nonfiction reading unit. So there were two tasks that they needed to complete. The first one was to create glossary of terms that they had learned from their nonfiction topic, and we were able to change that number based on student needs. So some students were doing eight to 10 words, other students were doing six words, some kids could do 12 words. So just gave the teacher a little bit of opportunity to say, what is best for you in your learning? And then there was a little criteria for success. So in order to succeed in your picture glossary, what do you need? You need to have pictures, you need to have words to describe the terms, and then also show one of the strategies that we had worked on, because one of the portions of the reading unit was, an author might use some text-specific or topic-specific language and words, and you need to be able to unlock those. So, could you show that you were using one of the strategies or several of the strategies? The second task that they needed to do was to create a flipbook or a brochure teaching different information about their topic. There was also another criteria for success, things that they needed to include. And then, once they finished both of those tasks and had it reviewed by the teacher, then they got to move on to their desserts, which were the choice options, a little more creative. They didn't have to do each of them, they got to pick based on what was exciting to them. So one option was, oh.
Sorry, I thought you were done.
So there was a newspaper article they could write, they could create a survey and do bar graphs, which is what we had just been doing in our math unit, make what we call a tasty book report, which you'll see some examples of later. So, a couple of different choices for them. Here are two examples of students working. The picture on the left is a student doing their main dish options. So, the student had chosen to research dolphins. So he had three books that he had pulled information from, and he's working on his flipbook. You can see, a little blurry, but his picture glossary there as well. On the right, a student is working on the dessert option of the bar graph. So she had surveyed questions, she had survey questions, collected the data, and then is making the bar graphs. On the left is a tasty book report. So it's a stalk of bamboo with different leaves with flaps, and the students would flip open the flaps and see the different facts she had learned about pandas.
That's so cool.
And then on the right, at the end of the week that we had been working on this, the students brought their work to the media center. We grouped them based on similar topics and invited the first graders to come and see, ask the experts questions, see what they had learned, and they got a chance to share to some of their siblings, because some of them have first-grade siblings, and also just to get a chance to present their knowledge. So we have a few clips of second graders talking about this project.
I like being an expert on pandas because I got to take different books and different information and make a whole book to teach other students more about pandas. I also got to talk with other people about my project and get ideas from them. I like being an expert on Jane Goodall. We made a menu, designed games, and presented it to some of our schoolmates to teach them about our topic. I also talked about their projects with them to learn more about their topic.
I like being an expert on animals because we got to work with our partners. I like that because if we had a fact we wanted to share or a question we wanted to ask, we could tell our partner. I also like when we got to share, when we got to show the first graders our hardware, it also makes them excited about our topic, too. Another one of my favorite parts of being experts on the animals is because we got to pick our own animal and got to go around the classroom asking our classmates what they thought our animals' traits were and which person we made it much more fun and even more interesting.
So, this is the menu. We added the appetizer part of it for the upper grades. So, in order to celebrate all of the reading units that we've done, it was this question of what is a hero? And who is a hero that you've read about throughout reading workshop? And they were asked to, students were asked to define what a hero is to them, and they also had to, we tied in the writing literary essay unit with the criteria for success. So these are the four items that you need to include in your writing. They had the option of handwriting or typing them on the Chromebook, and then on the right-hand side, you'll see the opportunities for choice. So they could draw a sketch, they could rewrite part of the story from another person, another character's point of view, which is also a fourth grade standard, interviewing your hero, a cartoon, or you could make a board game, and there should be elements from the story included in. And this was used for the open house, and students were able to play their game if they decided, or share their work with their parents as they came in, or other teachers in the school. And then there's a few students talking about. Oh, sorry. Here's a few images of students collaborating, working on their games, playing their games with each other, giving some feedback. And there should be elements from the story included in. And this was used for the open house. And students were able to play the game, their game if they decide, or share their work with their parents as they came in or other teachers in the school. And then there's a few students talking about. Oh, sorry. Here's a few images of students collaborating, working on their games, playing their games with each other, giving some feedback. The revolution was a really big part of fourth grade. So these are just some examples of students collaborating.
I really liked having a choice because it made me feel more confident in myself so I can choose what I'm good at. I think kids are more engaged because they get to choose stuff that's fun. So instead of just handing them a worksheet, one of my favorite parts of it was writing comic strips so you could summarize the story.
What I like about the learning contract is that you can work with other people and get some feedback, and I think it makes your work a little better.
I like how the learning contract made me feel more confident because I'm very excited. And the criteria for success section, it lists what you need to identify before you are in the learning session. You can take that information, write it down in the criteria for success, and you can twist it to make it a little more creative.
The next video, when I taught fifth grade, we were fortunate enough to have an author come to visit us. And before they came, I asked students on a learning contract in fifth grade to summarize the story, and they could show it in any way. And this group of students decided to make a movie trailer, and we actually presented it to the author of the book. So I think you'll really enjoy the fifth grade, the fifth graders using technology.
Oh my God, is this Mr. Parent?
That was so good.
So in February, we do, we celebrate Jazz History Month. So every year I do with our fourth graders, learning about jazz and the reason why we learn it, because it's a true American jazz form. You can go to the next slide. And so what we did is, every year that I do it, I wanted to make it more student-centered this year. So with the one-on-one initiative with the Chromebooks, I went to Stacy and I said, you know, Kim, you know, I wanted to use some of prior knowledge that students are using other, you know, the similar forms into some of the project learning that they, that they do. And I thought, maybe we'll use the same culinary reasons for success. So we use, so I did the same exact thing as well with ours on our research. It was, it took about three to four classes to complete this project. So it was the same thing that they've used with our other projects, with our appetizer, the main dish and dessert. Each student had to find a jazz grade to write about, to write a biography on. And they had total control on who they wanted to choose. And they had to tell me also, why did they choose that person? Some people were in chorus, so they picked a vocalist. There was other people that really loved the name of the, of the person, like Fast Waller, so they picked Fast Waller to have their, to have their person to write about. And it was, it was so great to see how engaged they were, a lot more this year than they did it, you know, in prior years, because they would come down with their Chromebooks and they had total control on doing the research and filling all the, all that information out. And then the most amazing part was really the presentation of them. I felt, especially students that I don't see presenting a lot during, in class, those were the students I was mostly impressed with on taking that student, student ownership. So Sebby is definitely the exception to that, because Sebby always loved to present. So I asked them, I said, would you like to present? He says, I would love to, so. Oh, next.
We have the little stool. We want to hear you loud and proud. Jump up there, awesome. There he is.
Good evening. My name is Sebastian Gu. This presentation is about Dave Brubeck. He was a jazz artist. When I came across his name, I got. When I came across his name, I got interested the second I saw what he, what musical instrument he played. I saw he played the piano, and I myself played the piano. Dave Brubeck was born in 1920 and died in 2012. Please enjoy this presentation about Dave Brubeck. Dave Brubeck was born in Concord, California. He was born on the 6th of December in 1920. Dave Brubeck was a piano player and a composer. He was a great, cool jazz artist. Dave Brubeck's albums were Time Out and Time Further Out. Dave Brubeck also played with Paul Desmond. Interesting facts about Dave Brubeck. Dave Brubeck died the day before his birthday. The reason I added this fact was because it is really, it's like really unusual for this to happen. It is, yes, it is unfortunate that he did pass away the day before his birthday, but this is rare to happen. That's why I added this fact in. Dave Brubeck was one of the great, cool jazz artists. Dave Brubeck's piano playing saved his life in World War II. He was in the army, but he did not fight. He was playing for a show, for the, at a show for the Red Cross. Please take a minute to look at these pictures about Dave, about, of Dave Brubeck. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebby.
Thank you, Sebastian.
So thank you to Sebastian and the Smith teachers. I didn't know if you had any questions or comments. I think Sebastian is a tough act to follow. He's an amazing public speaker and really demonstrated his passion and his excitement around the project, so thank you. And interestingly enough, his brother was in the fifth grade trailer when they did it for the author, Rob Booyah. So he's older now, but both of you were here, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you to the teachers. I don't know if you have any questions.
Sure. Arthur, any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I, first of all, I want to say Sebastian, you're clearly the best dressed person here. A little bit embarrassed that I didn't dress up for this. Secondly, you picked a good, a very talented person. Clearly, you have to be like 64 years old. But great job. First of all, good job for everybody. Sebastian, you did a really good job. So thanks a lot.
Jeff?
Yeah, no, I second that. And I mean, jazz is, I mean, it is one of the true art forms of, of America, and it is fantastic, there's so much interest in it. I'm, I'm surprised and very impressed. I mean, Dave Brubeck is like, I mean, you're, you're talking one of the legends there. And if you listen to his music, I'm assuming you listen to a lot of his music as part of this as well. I mean, you really become inspired when you, when you listen to this. So well done. And it really ties into the overall theme of project-based learning. I mean, that's what brings this forward. So it's music, it's pictures, it's what is going to inspire you. And it's not just, you know, reading about musicians, it's actually trying to understand, you know, what the motivation is. And not just for this particular, you know, fourth grade project, but the others as well. So well done, so thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, thank you all. I mean, I think the project-based learning obviously makes a lot of sense, you're teaching kids relatively young skills that they're, they're only going to get more important as time goes by. I liked the comment in terms of directly evaluating students as they're working through the project and you're looking at the final product. Because again, the idea of multiple ways to evaluate students is very important these days. And as far as the jazz biographies, yeah, terrific. And Arthur's right, like, you know, this is not, Dave Brubeck's not easy. Eleven, four times signatures or nine, four times. He was, he was out there a little bit, yeah. So it's great that the kids are getting to experience that. That's wonderful. So thank you all.
I agree with everyone. I think the project-based learning, the hands-on learning, it makes students more engaged, especially in their learning. They seem to learn better when they're engaged. And the choices, I think, is an awesome thing for students to have because they're making that choice. So great job tonight, great job, Sebastian. I learned a lot. I didn't know who Dave was, but now I do, so thank you very much.
You must be younger than the rest of them.
I am, but I will listen to some of his music. So no, thank you very much. Thank you all, great job tonight.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Smith School, thank you, Sebastian. Thank you. And is it okay to transition also? So thank you so much. Great. Next, we also have a special guest that I would ask Mr. Traverner to introduce in his work with Mr. Moody and some of our veterans.
We're excited to have Mr. Moody and the Danvers Veteran Council here to talk to us about a donation of a flagpole and flag as an addition to our Danvers High School stadium. Mr. Moody?
Since I don't have a presentation on the screen, I put together some handouts that you might be interested in. This will only take a couple of minutes, but in the meantime, I'll pull over the keyboard and play take five. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was so pleased to see everybody standing and do the pledge of allegiance tonight. I have 11 grandchildren in the Danvers area, 10 boys and one girl. And they're involved in the school sports program, lacrosse, soccer, football. And last September, I went and I sat about on the 50-yard line in the stadium, and the announcer, who was very good, got up and said, let's all rise and salute the flag, say the pledge of allegiance. So we all got up there, and there was no flag to be seen. There was no flag at all. So that got me a little bothered, because one of my grandchildren said, Papa, what are we saluting? And I said, well, there's supposed to be a flag here someplace. I'm sure there is. And the more I looked around, the more I asked questions, it seemed like there really wasn't, other than the one right out front here at the, at the main entrance to the school. So I started to talk to some of the folks, saying, what can we do about getting a flag at the stadium? The first page that I've given to you, it basically summarizes what I wanted to get across tonight. So as you go down here, things that we found when we looked at this project was, the original stadium, we understand, had a flagpole, and it was taken down before it was renovated, and nobody knew where it was. We thought it might have been in storage someplace. I've been going around town looking to see if I saw a particularly good-looking flagpole in anybody's backyard. I couldn't really find one. So, but the point was, when the new stadium was conceived and the specs came out, there was not funding in it for a flagpole. I don't know whether because everybody thought that we'd use the old flagpole, which we can't find now, or they just didn't think of it, or they didn't think it was necessary. But anyway, we were told that there was no funding for it. So then I rode around town, all the different towns and cities in this, on the North Shore, and looked at all of their football fields, and they all had a flagpole somewhere in the, in the vicinity. So we didn't have it, and I, I thought to myself, with all the other veterans, what do they do on graduation? What do they do on other sporting events? Is there some way we can help by bringing a flagpole into the, into the stadium? So that was, I put down some alternatives, we could do nothing. And if you are sitting in the, in the stands, in all honesty, if you turn to the left and you look, you can see a flag in the distance, but it's not quite the same as having it right in the, in the ballpark, you know? It was suggested to us by the DPW that maybe it would work out if you, if we just simply moved the flag that's out front closer to the stadium. As we looked at that alternative, it just seemed like it was a little, little bit cost prohibitive to be won. Plus the fact, in all honesty, I come into the school, the flag is right there by the door, it's, it's nice, you know? That's a good place for, for an American flag. So we didn't really want to move it either. So that's what we looked at, well, would it look funny if we had another flag? And then the whole discussion was, well, we could put one by the front gate, but that's like right next door to the, to the existing flag. Could we put it someplace else? I think the veterans liked the idea of, if you turn to the first picture that I gave you, at the 50-yard line, you look out on the football field, and you'll see on both 40-yard lines roughly, there is a flight, a light pole. And we said, wouldn't it be nice if at the 50-yard line, we had an American flag right there, you know? The DPW said, you can't really do that, because there's a lot of underground utilities there. Also, the football field was slanted just a little bit to allow drainage to go into that area, and it would be pretty soggy. So they suggested we don't do that. So together, we talked about where would be a good place to put the flag. And we said, if you can't put it on the 50-yard line, maybe by the scoreboard. Everybody should be looking at the scoreboard when we're having a sporting event. The other thing that bothered us at the time, and you probably know this better than I, I tried to find out when the flag is up, when this flag is up. And they said, it's always up during the Danvers High School football games, which is great. But there's so much other activity that's going on when the, when the varsity is not playing, as evidenced by all of the town, lacrosse and soccer and, and youth football that takes place right there. And there's, we're trying to be a good, a good example for the children, and there's no flag. Because the flag is not on this flagpole unless it's on those football games. And it's not up at night, and they play a lot of night games over here. So that's why we thought we, we definitely needed a flag. You'll see the first picture, I sat there at the 50-yard line, took that picture, and there was no flag to be seen. Now, in all honesty, just to the left of that picture, the flag is there. But this is the general view that you see. Where we thought we would like to put a flag is by the scoreboard. That's picture number two. And we didn't really care whether it was to the left of the scoreboard or the right, but somewhere around the scoreboard, that would tower a lot higher than the top of the scoreboard, that would probably be a good location. And to, to support that, if you look at the last picture, I was coming home a couple days ago, and I took this picture from the corner of Burley and Cabin. So you see how easy it is to look at the scoreboard. It would be nice to see an American flag right there. So that's why we had suggested to do that. We would propose to, well, the discussion with the DPW was that if this project is approved, the veterans would buy a new flagpole. The town would install it. The town would also give us a flag, which was something I thought was very generous. The flagpole that we looked at, it's around $3,000. And for a few hundred dollars more, you can buy the attachment that goes on the pole with the solar lights. So it'll be there 24/7, and every evening, it will be lit. So we thought that would look pretty nice. Granted, there is some discussion about what happens in hurricane season, which every now and then we get, you know, but we'll talk about that. So that was the situation. The DPW agreed, if this would, could be voted on, we would do it. And then the Danvers Rotary got wind that we were doing this, and they came forward and they said, we will pay for the flagpole. So you've got the flagpole. The only action that they wanted was to put a small plaque at the base of the flagpole saying that it'd been donated by the Rotary, which I have no problem with. I'm a little bit concerned that they know where the flagpole's going, and I don't know how many people are going to see it way down beyond the scoreboard. But that, they said, that's fine. If somebody wants to look. If somebody wants to look, that's, that would do, do, do it for them." So, at this point in time, we, we feel we could put the flag up as soon as we can get a poll ordered and delivered, provided I get the approval of the school committee. And then, if necessary, and I need some guidance on this, because I'm not a politician, do I need to go to the Board of Selectmen to get their approval? And also, along the same line, are there any special rules that we have to follow if the money for the flagpole was donated by a civic organization? Do we need to get some kind of clearance? I don't know the answer to those. But I'd like to at least start tonight by giving you this proposal that if there was no concern about putting a flag at the far end of the, at the football field, I think it would mean so much to everybody in town. And I'm here tonight seeking your approval.
So, if the, if the school committee is so inclined and in favor of this, which as a school department, we are and we're excited, and we've been in discussions with Mr. St. Pierre, the athletic director, and the DPW, and they are in full support of the project as well, we would formally recognize it under our donations later on in the meeting. And then, I could reach out to Mr. Collins at Town Hall, once the school committee did support it, to see if it needed to be formally voted. But again, we would recognize Rotary and the Danvers Veteran Council for their support of the project through a letter from my office, as well as through the formal recognition process when we do our monthly budget report, as long as the school committee's in support of this.
Discussion?
So, we need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
All right. So, I would make a motion that we approve the plan, as Dick has stated, to put the flagpole there or next to, or wherever, wherever it goes best with the school, school board. I think it's a great idea. I think it's, I think it's something that, you know, we probably should have done before, but let's take care of it now. So, my motion would be to support the plan as presented by Mr. Moody.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Just, it's a great plan. And I agree with Arthur, we should have thought of it in the first place. My, my instinct is that because the town controls the school property, that the Selectmen might have to approve it. But Joe can guide you better than that. But I suspect they'll be just as happy about it as we are. So, thank you for bringing this forward, Dick. And thank you to the veterans as a group.
Thank you, Eric. I was at my committee today, and I ran into Aaron Henry buying a loaf of bread. And he, I told him I was coming to the school committee tonight. And he said, "Well, I got wind that something like this was happening, and I spoke candidly to the Selectmen, and they think it's a great idea." And their comment was the same as yours. Why hadn't somebody thought of it?
And we're happy to approve it.
Exactly.
Isn't this the high ropes course? Isn't that ROTC?
No.
Which is the high ropes course?
For our project adventure.
Okay.
Yes. So that you can see that to the left.
Yeah, I saw it there. I'm like, that's a perfect location. Right next to the scoreboard, right next to all of that.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's a perfect spot.
I want to say, in the old stadium, the flagpole was near the scoreboard, if my recollection is correct. I think.
I believe so. That's what my recollection is as well.
Yeah. Great spot. Perfect.
Did one of you take it? You gotta fess up.
He's the tallest.
Not my backyard. I'll tell you that.
You don't know what happened.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. I agree with the gentleman. It definitely should have been out there. I think it was probably more oversight, I would think, or maybe we, we're thinking the flag was there. But to your point, it should be closer for all to see during all events, regardless of, be it the school or the public. So, thank you very much. Thank you to the Veterans Council. Thank you to Rotary. We have a motion, a second. So, we will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Very good. Thank you. So, you have our approval.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so Keith will continue to be in touch.
Yes, so I'll reach out to Town Hall this week, and then I'll be in touch.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yes, we're very appreciative. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. Next, we have our middle school, Holton Richmond Middle School. And Adam Federico and Ellen Ferick are here to share with us some updates of some planning that they have been working with the faculty at the middle school throughout this school year.
We're here tonight just to provide a little bit of an update as to some of our work this year regarding our achievement data and our MCAS scores. So, if you remember back in October, we presented some information about our current scores and some of the work that we felt was needed to work on that data this year. Just some broad themes that we really used this year to approach this. Number one, we tried to make it a more of a personalized experience for our students. So, we spent some time having our teachers really have some conversations with individual students about their current scores, so they could better understand how the test works and what their performance was. We also spent some time personalizing with students around some of the motivational aspects of this test. It's not always the most exciting time for middle school students, but we spent some time really talking about putting in a full effort, and that it is one representative of their learning. And students responded positively to, to that kind of work. Our teachers did a great job at, at writing personalized notes to students, encouraging their best effort, and helping them feel confident about the tests as they approached them. Second theme that I think we, we did a lot of work around was the idea of really basing it on the data, so really looking at the numbers in a lot of different ways, and trying to best understand where we were as a school and where our, where our learners were individually. And then, lastly, the last kind of broad theme was that we wanted this to be integrated. We wanted this to fit into all the other work that we do at our school. We didn't want this to be sort of a standalone item that happened only here, only in this place, but try to really integrate it throughout, throughout the curriculum, throughout our work this year. So, I wanted to give you a couple of specific updates as well. The first is that we adjusted, who had access to the math intervention course this year? So, this was a course, a second math course that operated on a trimester basis. And it really provided, you know, access and support to a specific group of students. So, if you flip to the next slide, we were able to have 78 students in grade six take this course over the three trimesters, and 77 students take it in grade seven. So, that meant that those students all got an extra trimester of some math instruction. We based entry into that course around a specific group of students. So, we looked at kids that were really close to the, to the meeting, the meeting standard. So, we had a lot of students who were in that partially meets category, and we really targeted that group as getting some extra instruction. Specifically, it focused on, you know, key concepts in the current grade level, so really reinforcing those key concepts. Also, a lot of individualized work, and we used the Chromebooks and technology to do that. So, there were a number of programs that you can see here where students were able to work using technology to shore up some of their, their math skills and concepts. And I think this was effective for kids because they felt like it was individualized to them. They weren't just taking some random course, but they saw how concepts they needed to work on, they saw where they were maybe needed a little bit shoring up, and they could also see their growth. So, using the technology and using some of these online programs, I think it helped with engagement. Anytime you're going to ask somebody to do extra math, sometimes it's not necessarily what they're looking for, but I think having this, this, this approach, this individualization and the technology, you know, really helped with that. So, we were pleased with how that went. And we got a lot of positive feedback from students and parents regarding this course. And the grade-level math teachers as well. Anecdotally, they felt like they were seeing their kids more confident and more prepared in, in their main math course. So, we were, we were pleased with those results this year. On the next slide, we wanted to just talk a little bit about, part of our, our data this year told us that we needed to work with our high-needs cohorts. These are kids, for example, that are on IEPs. So, we asked our special educators and their academic support classes to really take some time to make sure that, that those learners had a little extra specialized instruction around how they could demonstrate their learning, and make sure that they felt confident and ready to go. So, again, I wanted just to give you the numbers. In grade eight, we were able to have 35 students access this, this instruction, 50 students in grade seven, and 31 in grade six. And this was a part of their academic support classes, taught by a couple of our special educators. The next, the next difference, or the next step that we took this year was some work with our teachers. So, we applied for and received a grant from the Department of Ed through the turnaround process, which I'll talk a little bit about at the end. And this allowed us to do some specialized training for teachers at Holton Richmond. What we looked at is our teachers meet twice every seven days with their grade-level peers, so the sixth-grade math teachers or the seventh-grade English teachers. And we wanted to train teachers at that level a little more intensely around running those meetings and helping to ensure that our FAR cycle work was really running at, you know, full capacity. And if you remember, FAR cycle is when we use that formative assessment, so those quick check-ins as we go to understand how kids are doing. And there's really some key parts of that. That's when we give kids feedback, we investigate what's going on with our learners, are they understanding, are they not? We reteach them if we need to, we regroup them based upon how they're learning. Sometimes, we feel like we're ready to move on. And then, lastly, how do we extend those learners that are doing very well? So, we wanted to train teachers at every grade level to be able to support those conversations and support that planning even more skillfully than, you know, was already happening. And that was funded by the Department of Ed. So, we felt like that was a good use of, of some money that we were able to qualify for. Next slide. Broadly, we made some adjustments to our curriculum based upon our MCAS results. So, it started with, right in the beginning, looking at our lessons and our units, and are we closely aligned to the standards? That was work over the years where we went from sort of old-school MCAS to PARC to the newer versions that we felt like we needed to tighten up, so we began with that. We changed the order of a lot of units this year, so the kids had earlier exposure and maybe longer exposure to key concepts. Other units were shortened or removed if they really weren't, you know, key, key to the standards. We asked our teachers to add more assessment items that mirror the kinds of questions they see on an MCAS test, so that the kids, you know, as they're going, would feel comfortable and be ready to answer those kind of questions. And again, we increased the use of formative assessments. So, we're really looking to check in quickly and more often as we go, so that we can make adjustments as needed and not wait till that chapter test or that unit test, but lots of check-ins along the way. So, those were, were some of the adjustments that we made across the board. I think one of the things we try to do in Danvers is have everything aligned. So, whether you're looking at a school improvement plan or a strategic plan, is everything in alignment. So, we looked at our student learning goals and our professional practice goals. So, those are goals that every teacher in Danvers sets as part of their evaluation. So, at the middle school, we asked some of our teachers to use the current MCAS data to figure out which kids should they really put some extra focus on this year? Who should they really take a look at? And, and just how that translated was, during their planning, during their instruction, they had identified groups of kids that they were really planning interventions, planning supports for, and hopefully making sure that they better understood the material this year. So, again, with this, I just want to highlight the alignment. So, from the teacher evaluation to our school improvement plan, up through the strategic plan, all this is aligned and part of our work. Lastly, as you know, this year, our school is designated as needing assistance from DESI. So, with that comes a process called the turnaround process. So, we've been engaged, myself, Mrs. Ferick, Mrs. Wormers, in a pretty robust process with the Department of Ed, where you have to write a plan. The plan will be forwarded to DESI probably in about a week for feedback. This is a, this is a really thorough plan. It's, it's around 41 pages as of today, and I added in some items today. It gets implemented over the next two to three years. So, our hope is that we see progress with this year, this year's results. But DESI looks at it as a two- to three-year time period where you work on improving your achievement data. There are monthly webinars, which we've attended, there have been face-to-face meetings, and, you know, the plan has, has seven main sections. And that'll be something that we will, you know, share publicly and make prominent a part of our work as we move forward. So, I won't read all the categories, but I can tell you that the plan asks a lot. It's a new format, so as we've gone, DESI has taught us how to write it. So, it's not something they've, the format they put on, put in place this year was not the previous one. So, I think there have been some, some growing pains from DESI's end, but we've, I think we've put in a lot of work with this plan, and we're hopeful that it represents what DESI's looking for and ultimately leads to, you know, some, some increases in our achievement scores, certainly in math and science and ELA. And again, that plan will be submitted, I'm hoping, next week or the week, week after. And then, they give us feedback, and by the end of June, DESI reports that it'll be finalized for implementation. So, that is just a brief update. We certainly wanted to give you time for questions, but we wanted to make sure that we came back and sort of updated you from where we were in October and let you know some of the things that we've done this year at Holton Richmond.
Thank you, Adam.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Eric?
Well, I think it's, it's clear, taking the, the need to try and improve our scores very seriously and obviously putting a lot of resources in terms of time, effort, energy of the staff, and trying to attack it from a whole bunch of different angles, and, you know, looks like the kind of thing that will work. You just keep doing the hard work day to day, and you're going to get results out of this. Again, I would emphasize to everybody that I'm glad to see us trying to do what we have to do to improve the scores. But there's so many other things that, especially at the middle school, which are important. And I've often said, I think that middle school, to me, is the toughest group of students that you get in one place, because that, they're, they're in that in-between time where they're really just starting to figure out who they are. There's a lot of temptations that they get and distractions that they get at that age that really start to take root for the first time. And they're starting to think about the future, and adolescence begins and puberty begins, and it's just a tough time. So, you're dealing with a challenging group of students, and I'm not telling you anything you don't already know. So, I appreciate what you're doing. I'd like you to keep us updated as it, as it goes. I think it's important for the town to realize too, that if, you know, if DESI's thinking this is a two- to three-year process, that we're going to have to have some patience. And I think the fact that, you know, you obviously care about how the students are doing, you and the staff and everybody at the middle school, so just keep working at it. We're behind you, and have every confidence that you'll see, you know, we'll see improvements in the test scores, but also, generally speaking, we know the kids are going to continue to get what they need from a social and emotional standpoint from you folks as well. So, thank you.
Jeff?
I agree with everything Eric said. It is the toughest stage, I would say, for kids. And that's because I have a middle schooler right now. I'll say it next year when he's in high school too, but I'm going to change it. Yeah, right. So, Jason, right. Yeah, so. Let me just ask a couple of quick questions. So, the, the, DESI came back and said, "We need help. We've, we've got some issues." Other than MCAS scores, what other data did they use to make that assessment?
They, so, for the first time, the Commonwealth did look at attendance. That's the only other metric that, that as a state, DESI looks at. So, that's, that's, I mean, the, the turnaround process is based on MCAS scores. So, that, that's the metric that they use. The plan itself is comprehensive. So, I think for us as a middle school, we, we were very clear that we were not going to abandon other aspects of, of what we do and what we think is important for the adolescent learner.
Right.
So, we, you know, we felt like we would continue working on social-emotional learning, service-based learning. We've done a lot of project-based learning this year, developing personal qualities and personal traits. All that is still happening. Our, our staff was committed to doing it all, and we're going to continue to approach it that way. But from DESI's perspective, they use primarily MCAS scores to, to make these judgments. And that's, that's their approach. So, we, you know, we want to be responsive to, we also recognize that the community of Danvers has certain expectations for us across the board, and we're going to work towards all those.
That's, that's what I thought. And we've talked about this a lot at, at our meetings, formative assessments. I was looking for the words at the past couple of meetings, not these meetings, but other meetings that have happened in the town regarding, "How do you know you're succeeding?" Like, what are, give me something else. And I was, I was trying to think of the, the term, and it's formative assessments, right? This is when you regularly review students, and that does not mean test them constantly, right? You use a lot of the other project-based learning that we've talked about today. Can you create a video? Can you have a conversation with someone? Can you do a book report, right? Can you do these other things that are not just what you're going to see on MCAS? I'm glad we have regular check-ins on that, and we can review that. So that's good. But if this is only an MCAS issue, then we appear to be taking sort of the right approach to that. So then the next question is, okay, you have to have this extensive plan to fix the quote-unquote "problem." Do they give you guidance, DESI? Do they give us guidance as to, this has worked in the past for schools that have had MCAS issues, and therefore we recommend you do X, Y, and Z because the data has shown that if you do this in the past in Massachusetts, this is going to work? Or, I'm not trying to lead you, but do they say, your scores aren't where they need to be, fix it, and here's seven areas you probably need to fix? Or do they give you guidance and show you data as to what's worked in the past?
So the turnaround process, it asks you to really look at your whole school. So in that sense, I think there's, it was a healthy exercise to really take a, sort of, a step back and look at lots of different areas and think about, how are we approaching this issue? How are we approaching that issue? They don't give you three solutions and say, we know these three work. I would say that we don't fit the general profile of some of the other schools that are working in this process. We also don't get the same amount of resources that some of the other schools get in this process. So I think for us, we certainly, we're excited to get the grant that we got, and we felt like it supported the professional work that we had embraced as a school and as a district anyway, so that was helpful. They point you toward the federal research-based programs or ideas which are very broad and very large and often apply to large school districts and bigger, I'd say, bigger entities than maybe a Holton Richmond. They give you the plan format, but it's a new format. So as we've written it, they're teaching you how they want you to write it. So I think we're, you know, this is the first year of this new format, so I'm interested to see what their feedback is. I think we've written a pretty comprehensive plan, so I'm interested in their feedback to see if we hit the mark or maybe there are other things that we need to adjust. So they've certainly been available, and we've used that feedback. We've had some individual calls and work with them, and I think we're trying to, again, balance what we know the town of Danvers values and what the town demands of us in terms of a broad, well-balanced education and also making sure that we're addressing sort of the state requirements. So I guess my answer would be sort of. Some areas, yes. Other areas, no. It's still a new process, and we haven't maybe gotten the guidance that we were hopeful for. But we still feel good about the work we've done.
Yeah. I mean, so here's the net-net of what I'm getting at, is this school does an extraordinary job. The teachers do an extraordinary job. Everybody at that school is focused on student learning, which I think is absolutely fantastic. And so, yes, the MCAS scores could certainly improve. I'm very interested in a lot of the techniques you talked about, the personal one-on-one letters and the writing, because I think the issue is motivation. I really do. I really believe, and if you see the dip that happens across the state, this is not something that is unique to Danvers where our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade students just suddenly are like, well, I'm not really interested in taking this, which is a little harsh, but it's not, it's not really what's happening. But it's, the motivation is not there as it is for high school or probably some of our younger learners. And so, you know, if there is something we can do to address that motivation and say, look, this is important. It's not a, you know, it's a reflection of how we think you're learning, you know, do your best, right? Reinforcing that, I believe, I don't have the data for it, and obviously DESI doesn't either, but I believe that that is something that is important. And some of these other things, the district systems, the assessment, the envision the future, the stakeholder engagement, and we do that so much. And we know we're on the right path by the formative assessments that we do with these students. And so, you know, I'm not going to take these MCAS results on face value as the representation of the school. I don't believe, I'll let my other colleagues speak for themselves as well, but I am curious to see what this is. I am curious to see if we can determine any causality between what we're doing and these scores. And I would have loved to have seen something from DESI that said, doing X, Y, and Z showed results in some other school. We don't have that, so we'll have to do it on our own, and I know we'll make improvements. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Arthur?
I'm glad you don't see that from DESI because DESI has no idea what they're doing as far as this testing is concerned. They don't know. You don't have to comment on this. I don't expect you to. It's silly. It's ridiculous. They don't even know what they're trying to teach you to do. But let me say this. I think that the middle school is providing a well-rounded and excellent education to the kids that go there. And they're well-prepared when they get to high school, and then when they get to high school in their 10th grade and they take the test, the scores are great, okay? So, you know, the scores aren't going to be great if they're not getting the education that they're supposed to get, even though the scores are essentially meaningless. So I'm glad that you're working really hard on this and adding things to what you're already doing. Again, I think that you do a great job over there. I think the teachers do a great job. I think the kids are coming out of there, you know, as I said, well-rounded and prepared. There is so much angst over the fact that in one particular year, we have scores, by the way, on a test that keeps changing every year. And I know I've said it before, but it is so frustrating to me. It keeps changing every year. The test is essentially meaningless. Nobody knows what it means. And quite frankly, when you're in eighth or seventh or sixth or fourth, again, it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean anything. It does, what's happening to these kids as far as what they're learning and their well-rounded education that they're getting and how they're being prepared to go up to the next level, that's what means something. And, you know, as I said, the kids that are coming out of the Danvers High School, they go to the same colleges that every other school does, including places like Pingery and Sancho's Prep and all of those places, so they are prepared. And that doesn't happen unless the middle school does its job. So I think you're doing fine. I know that because some people put, and generally, it's from the standpoint of not really paying any attention to how these, what the scores are and how the tests are done and all the changes, but they just see a score and the simple way of looking at it is, ooh, we have a problem. Well, you know what? You've got to deal with it. And so I'm glad that you're dealing with it, and I'm glad that you're working with whoever you're working with at DESI, even though they don't know what they're doing. And I'm glad that you're doing whatever you can to get, to improve in any way you can. And most importantly, I'm glad that what I heard earlier, which is that you're not foregoing all the other important stuff that you do at that school to focus on getting a test score up, because that would be a huge mistake. So it's my opinion. I don't need you to comment on it, but I think you guys are doing great.
Thank you.
I agree with what these gentlemen said. I also thank you very much for working on this. Folks started way back in September, even before September, working on this. This has been a year-long process, and it will continue to be a process. And thank you to you and your staff for being committed to doing this. I am frustrated a little bit by DESI saying, okay, you know, we'll help you, but then their help is, it's a new report. No one knows what they're really quite doing. What are the, to Jeff's point, what are the things that have worked in other districts that maybe we could try, you know, like, because we're also looking to them for guidance to help with this as well. But I am very confident that everything that you folks are doing this year and will continue to do going forward will help improve the test scores, but also the learning. And I am glad you're still engaged in the social-emotional and the well-rounded education. And again, when they do get to the high school, it is, it is like by 10th grade, yep, they've got to pass it. So it means more to them then because the testing prior to is practice for the high school part of it. But as long as we keep moving forward and keep trying to improve on a daily basis, I do think that there will be improvement. But thank you very much for all your hard work and continue to work hard on this.
I just continue my rant.
Yep.
Term turnaround is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was.
Holton Richmond Middle School does not need a turnaround, okay? They don't, they don't need, quite frankly, they need to keep working, doing what they're doing and improving like we try to do in all of our schools here at all times. We're always trying to get better, and I think we've always done that. But to call it a turnaround, turnaround process is just silly.
Is that their term or ours?
That's their term. And as everything else with DESI, it's somebody came up with a word that is just so ridiculous and non-applicable to what's going on. So I just wanted to get that out.
No, I agree. It's the same thing. If I may, Madam Chairman, can we get a copy of the plan when it's done?
Absolutely.
Just to, it'd be interesting to see what DESI does, because next year, they'll have a different plan. And, I mean, I do, I kind of feel like, and Arthur, you've addressed this obviously, but it feels like maybe over the last five or six years, you know, DESI is the lab and we're the lab rats because the test change and the curriculum changes and whether you are going to take the test on paper or by computer changes. And now even their turnaround, quote-unquote, "plan" is changing. So it's very difficult to hit a moving target, and that's, I think, what we've been asked to do. So, and honestly, I'm much more concerned about things like the teen suicide rates going up something like 3% in the last 10 years, or the increase in vaping among young people, or the increase in students that Mary's staff sees in terms of so anxious that they can't come to school. Those are the realities of what we are dealing with, and people especially who have not really been connected with the school systems for a long time or think back to when we were in school. It was a different world outside the schools, and it sure is different in, and while, yeah, test scores are fine, they count, they're important, but I'm much more concerned about how the children are and students are getting through their life, making healthy choices and coming out at the end of their, being impacted at the end of their educational experience in Danvers in ways that go well beyond test scores. So, non-done. Thank you.
Perhaps DESI would like to make a presentation to our committee as to their findings and some sort of evaluation.
You could always ask them.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, I'll pass on that.
Here we go on that day.
Thank you, Adam and Ellen, and I'm sure we'll see you again in the fall for more updating, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you. And thank you to the school committee for your support also. I think we really, we did take some risk over the last couple of years in moving, just as you spoke about, moving where we are as a district with student engagement, social-emotional learning. And as the system changed, I do think that we got caught in some of that mix of the numbers. So the middle school is committed to educating the social-emotional and academic learning as all of our schools are. So thank you so much. So with that, Mary's going to pull it together with just a brief update. We want to keep the strategic plan because a lot has been happening with our resources, with our Essex County Learning Community grant, and so we've done some work with supporting student services.
Right, great. So this month's update, I really want to focus on collaborative work we've been doing with teachers. So the Essex County Learning Community, we call it ECLC Grant, has really encouraged teacher leadership, and it did that by having us create a lead team that had administrators and teachers on it, as well as creating what they call topical groups. So, and those topical groups would have three members from our district in them, and they focused on three different areas. So one was social-emotional learning that we talked about, we've been talking about here. Another one is called multi-tiered system of support, and it's that kind of what Adam and Ellen were talking about earlier today, that personalized kind of support that we do for students. And we assess their understanding using these formative assessments then, but then, on analyzing, we decide, how are we supporting these students, the ones that are, you know, maybe struggling with a concept, or even those that have mastered the concept but need an extension? So we really focused on that as well. And we also, in that multi-tiered system of support, talked about how do we service students and where do we service students? And is it in the general classroom? Is it pulling students out? So we've been doing a lot of great work with them. And so those top, the third group is the project-based learning, which you saw as well today. So you're seeing, as people present at the school committee, the different teachers that are participating in that work. From those three teachers participating on a topical team, we've expanded that group so that we have more feedback from teachers and buy-in. So we have a, from the SEL team, we had three teachers that were supporting that in the grant, but then it's expanded to a team of 15 teachers and administrators on a steering committee for social-emotional learning. Those teachers participated in the social-emotional learning focus, that visioning process that was done in March. We had members of the community come as well, and they're working on solidifying goals for our coming school year and developing a vision statement and guiding principles. So by the, by the beginning of June, we'll have that in place with that committee. The MTSS, again, starting with three people, has grown to a committee of 10. We've been participating in a professional development series with the grant. Dr. Dana's joined our team as well at the meetings. We've went to two meetings. We have a third one. But we also have onsite consultation with an expert, and she's been, you know, so helpful in helping us put together what our multi-tiered system of support will look like for the academic side, but also on the behavioral side. So, which we have, each school has its approach to the behavioral expectations for students, but we're kind of coming into like a district vision of it as well. And social-emotional learning informs both sides of that. So they've really helped us think through that more deeply, and that committee of 10 is really working on, again, some guiding principles and goals coming out of our work. It was, interestingly enough, it actually spurred another collaborative teacher-administrator committee coming out of that, and it's to focus on the elementary schedule because we really need the structures in place to make sure the multi-tiered system of support can be effective. And then finally, the last one is project-based learning. So you saw today some teachers dabbling in project-based learning. We also have, the Holton Richmond has had a study group running all year long. I was lucky enough to observe in a sixth-grade ELA class last week and saw Empathy in Action. That was their project-based learning project where they are brainstorming ideas to do a community service learning project and actually implement it before the end of June. So when I was there, they were, had a brainstorm of like seven to 10 ideas. They were doing a feasibility study to see which of them would be, you know, the most feasible to do in the short amount of time they had left in the school year. So they were narrowing it down to two or three projects. They were conferring with the teacher and their parents. They were going home and really talking about with their families, like, if I was going to implement one of these projects, you know, which one do you think is best and what can I get done? Because again, it's an independent project that they're going to do. So it's just so great to see teachers being able to try out the project-based learning and see the energy that the kids have in the classroom for it. So we get to culminate that in July with a week-long project-based learning course that teachers will take. Many teachers from the Holton Richmond Study Group are participating in that, and we also will have some Danvers High teachers, as well as, we'll be reaching out to the Smith School as well as to have them join us for that week. And we have an expert group. It's called the Buck Institute. They're coming in for three days to really teach us what it really means to be project-based and what it really means to hand over the reins to the kids and let them start to drive their learning, to really have that voice and choice. And then the last two days, we're going to be working with Keith Taverna and our acrostic Chris Blessin. He, they're going to talk about education space, classroom space, and how that supports project-based learning. So we'll spend a day with them and thinking about how do we set up the classroom for really, to really support that project-based learning. And then the last day, we give them to really pull all the pieces together and be ready to go when the school year starts. And luckily, the Buck Institute comes back once we start implementing to support and coach us as those projects go. So I see a committee coming out of that group as well, but first, we have to get the class in and really understand what project-based learning is, and we'll move forward with, again, a collaborative committee of teachers and administrators. So that's my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary. Questions? Jeff?
We do a lot of stuff. So I'm, you know, and I was listening to most of it, and I've read a lot of it online, too, but I was just thinking about the previous conversation and this and everything else. It's like, we don't just sit back and say, okay, well, you know, we got some stuff to do and we're going to continue as-is and maybe we'll look at a few. I mean, we are constantly moving and improving. I mean, and there is so much stuff, but I also think we take a step back and reflect sometimes, and we say, okay, what's working? What's not working? Are we coordinated? Are we getting together? And this is why we function really well, right? And I think as a, as a community, right, as the presentations we had earlier, when we see something that's missing, let's fix it, right? And it's not an academic thing. It's something as simple as, you know, look, there shouldn't be a flag out on the field. I mean, it's kind of common sense, but, all right, we missed some things, but we fix it eventually. This is important, right? Because this, what you're talking about with these improvement plans and everything else, is kind of our guiding view, and everybody can see this online, right? So in case you're wondering, well, are we improving? Are we fixing things? Yeah, it's right here. And there is opportunity for commentary from anyone, from teachers, from the community. You know, if you've got concerns or you're curious about, you know, what are we doing? It's in all of this, right? So I just encourage everybody to really take a look at it and see the good work that everybody is doing. Because there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to make a graduation of all of these students seem so easy. It's not. I mean, there is a lot that has to happen right for that to happen. And so, you know, thank you for that and thank you for all of this. Because it does tie in well to the overall picture that we're trying, so definitely appreciate it.
Arthur?
I agree with Jeff. Thanks.
Eric?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Well, thank you very, yeah. Thank you for the update. It is a lot of work and appreciate all the work that administrators, teachers, students, and really the community. Because to that point, a middle schooler parent was on Facebook looking for help for her son who was doing a school project on, I think, working with the elderly. And she's like, it's for a school project. And so it's not just the students, it's the parents being involved too. So I think that's all great. So thank you very much for the update.
Thank you. And then at our June meeting, we will have our year-end accomplishment. So again, you'll be able to see it. And as Jeff shared that, then it does end up on our website, so that way we're sharing this information with the community. And we'll have that in the ongoing conversations at each meeting. So thank you. Our last item from information from the superintendent is, at our May meeting, is the time to say what our last day of school is, and that will be June 18th for this school year. So that is a change for Danvers, where we did have all of our faculty have our two professional development days before the school year started. And although we had a mild winter, it seems like we're sort of not finishing with this weather that we're having to get to the spring weather, but we only had one snow day this year. So June 18th, it seems like it's a, yes, it seems like it is around the corner. So we are moving quickly and students are completing projects and thinking about what they can continue to do. And as we look at sort of our both worlds right now of finishing up one school year and preparing for our next school year. So it's an exciting time of the year in the Danvers Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no unfinished business?
We have one more item under new business. I believe we were going to, we had an over, under new business.
We're getting there.
New business, sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
He just wanted to make sure we didn't, Mary Beth and I didn't forget as we get our new routines down.
Exactly.
Mary Beth?
So where are we? Unfinished business? Nothing.
We have no unfinished business?
No. New business.
New business. Thank you. So before we get into the, what's on the agenda, we would like to ask the school committee to move forward from our executive session, our Student Service Directors contract.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that the school committee approve a new three-year contract for Dr. Mary Tatum to commence on July 1st, 2019, terminating June 30th, 2022. And all terminating means is that the contract's over, not the employment. So that's my motion.
Motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
If I may, Madam Chairman, I'm really pleased to be able to make the motion. I think my sense is that all of us are very pleased with the work you've done, Mary, and really worked very hard to be innovative in terms of how we're delivering services, find ways to deliver more services in district. And that's, I'm sure, always an ongoing challenge. And dealing with an ever-increasingly challenging, that's a lot of, that's a lot of adverbs there, increasingly challenging group of students and group of issues and types of issues that you're facing in your department. And those who work for you and with the school system and with the most needy of the students sometimes are, I think, really dedicated and devoted. And that speaks to both the administration's commitment and, of course, your commitment to it. So I'm pleased that you want to stay and really pleased about the job you've done. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? No?
Agreed.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you. Thank you, Mary. We look forward to another three years with you here in Danvers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary, and thank you to the school committee. Okay.
Okay. Bullying Prevention Plan?
Thank you. The superintendent recommends the approval of the review of the bullying prevention plan for a first reading.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. So a quick overview of the process, sort of as we talk about connection state, federal, at the local level. As part of the state legislation, a number of years ago, we have, every district needs to have a bullying policy, which we have, and then we need to have a bullying prevention and intervention plan. And what you see in front of you is today's packet. This is actually a template from the state. So these different categories, every district in the state of Massachusetts needs to have these categories, and we fill it in with our information. So, and it also needs to be reviewed on a every-other-year basis. So this is the year that we took to review that. We were able to work with our school councils, with the Wellness Committee are the two major ones, and with our PACs, depending the meetings with our principals, and then also with the administrative team. So taking a look at the review. So you'll see here the information, you can see the changes. It really is more just updating some of the pieces. We tried to make language that would be for ongoing pieces where we do need to update it on a every-other-year basis. The conversation was very good. It started with our Wellness Committee and Dave Thompson, which is, we're very fortunate to have an active school committee that the liaisons and the subcommittees that our school committee members are on. So Dave is part of our Wellness Committee and was at that meeting, was able to go through, make some edits for us also. He had us started with this document here. And then our Policy Subcommittee reviewed this a week ago also. So to be able to bring it forward to you.
Any discussion?
Only, it's, there's really nothing substantive that's changed as far as I can see. So we're really continuing on with what we've been doing for the last, now, many years. And I think we've been, I think our policies have worked well. And so I think it's really just some kind of, some word changes and things like that, but nothing really changing what we do.
My question, I guess, is because there are no real substantive changes, you know, do we feel, how do we know it's working? I guess one can say it seems to be working. So you get the feeling. And it's very difficult, I know, because in some ways, if someone's being bullied and you never find out about it, it can't be dealt with. But what's our sense from a data standpoint, tracking the occurrences, that sort of thing, as to whether what's working is adequate without any, and it may be, without any substantive changes?
There's a couple of pieces. We have our youth risk behavior survey. So as a district, we've made a commitment to continue that process, also on an every-other-year basis, to collect that data and work with our Danvers Cares Coalition to look at that information, assess the data that we have there. So that data has been good data. We haven't seen any blips going up there. We also do report to the Department of Education bullying types of events, bullying-like types of instances. And that data has not increased either over the time. And then there would be the qualitative pieces. So our work with our principals and dealing with different cases, it was, and then being able to go and ask the questions. So we have had, in our last strategic plan, we had survey questions that had to do with culture and climate, so asking the questions there. And then also the work, as principals, work with different families and with children and working through that process. And then being able to go through this and asking through the Wellness Committee, going back to school councils. So realizing that we do take the bullying serious, the investigations are thorough, we take the time to work through that, we work through being proactive on different skills for students. So that's what you see in our curriculum, the work with social, emotional learning. So there's the quantitative pieces with our youth risk behavior, the number of instances that we report, and then also the qualitative pieces around our school climate.
Good. Because to me, it's, there's almost nothing will impact the students' learning, to say nothing of just their daily life than being bullied and having no one really listen, understand, or do something about it. So to me, it's a real priority that we are proactive and taking every complaint seriously. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a question. So under Leadership A is the priority statement, but then under D, it appears to be the same thing?
So what we, that was really just moving it around, is we felt, we actually looked at another district's piece also, and we thought, really, the priority statement, even though the template had it, the fourth in the area there, it should really be first. So we want to just make the statement. So that was really just moving it around, so it makes the statement first about what our priority is. And then we get to the details of how we implement that under that category.
All right. So that would, that would come out, that D, what it says now, it says priority statement under D.
Yes. Thank you. We will take that in our notes for the next part. Right, we should have crossed that one out. Thank you.
That's the only, that was the only question I had. So.
Perfect.
So no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. Fundraising requests are next. The superintendent recommends the approval of the fundraising events for the DHS Girls' Tennis.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. And next is our overnight and out-of-state field trip request. The superintendent recommends the approval of the overnight out-of-state field trip request for the Danvers High School AP United States Government and Politics Class 2, Go to Washington DC, January 25th through the 28th of 2020.
Ah, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Order of Business, Communications?
Thank you. We have our normal piece here and the link to our North Shore Education Consortium, where the superintendents are, serve as the board. And the budget has been passed at the consortium, and that should be on their website. And then we're also working on hiring of a new treasurer. Thank you.
Legislation?
Yes, I have some information from Representative Spiliotis's office. There's going to be a Cherish Act and Promise Act rally at the State House, Thursday, May 16th, at 5:00 PM at the corner of Park Street and Beacon Street, which will culminate the day of action inside the State House. And that is related, I believe, to the Fund Our Future program. Fund Our Future is a grassroots campaign with a goal of passing legislation to increase state funding for public education by more than $1.5 billion a year, more than $1 billion for public schools, and more than $500 million for public higher education. There are a group of representatives who are, including Representative Spiliotis, who are co-sponsoring bills, including one called the Promise Act. And what that effectively will do is look at a time to implement four core recommendations of the Commission to Increase the Foundation Budget, resulting in more than $1 billion in new state funding. And just as an example, what the bill would do is would, in figuring, in calculating the formula, it would realistically account for districts' healthcare costs by using actual data to set insurance costs and inflation rates, modernize the formula to provide adequate support for English learners and low-income students, more accurately account for special education costs, better reflect actual special education enrollment and the total cost that districts bear, and increase state aid to certain districts to mitigate losses to charter schools. Guarantee minimum annual state aid increases to $50 per pupil on an annual basis guaranteed. That wouldn't necessarily be the only increase. Recent report found that accounting for inflation and changes in student enrollment, public higher education in Massachusetts has effectively been cut by 31% since fiscal year 2001, which is why this is becoming an issue that has really gotten some legs over the last several years. So basically, there's an awful lot happening on that end. The House budget, Chair Peash on the House budget, let's see, includes $5,125, sorry, $5,125 million for Chapter 78, which represents a $218,000 increase over FY '19. The increase in Chapter 78 will keep school districts at foundation levels of spending, guarantees a minimum increase of $30 per pupil for every student in every district. So there's an awful lot going on. The House final and Senate Ways and Means budgets both include an increase for Danvers' Chapter 78 of $7,108,192 for a 3.95% increase over fiscal '19. And special education circuit breaker funding, it's differing between the House and the Senate Ways and Means budgets. The House was at $329 million, House, Senate, rather, Ways and Means was at $345, which is nearly fully funded for the reimbursement rate. So a lot of good stuff happening in terms of the foundation budgets and funding for schools in this upcoming budget.
Thank you. DEEP, the DEEP monthly meeting is this Wednesday, 7:45 at First Ipswich Bank. Looking forward to this month's meeting. And next month will be the Breakfast of Champions, where DEEP will honor retiring teachers and our corporate sponsors for the year. And that is on June 15th, is it? What's that, Wednesday?
We'll let you know in just one. Second.
12th.
June 12th, that's right.
Thank you.
So that's DEEP. Danvers Cares?
Fourth Annual Light the Night Purple Walk-in Community Gathering is Wednesday, May 15th, 6:30 to 8:00 PM, the Rotary Pavilion and Pevydy Institute Library. So just so folks remember what this is, this is a walk and the community gathering, which supports awareness of opioid and other substance use in the community. So it should be a good event. There will be entertainment, t-shirts to the first, I don't know how many participants, but if you don't get a t-shirt, wear purple. So that's that. That's for Danvers Cares.
Thank you, Jeff. CPAC?
So we just had a meeting earlier today, talking about, not a very worth turning on, and it's a really, really, really bad night, so we're pretty good for, um, not sure what we expect this, and she's going to, also, we're just, um, I'm, um, so, um, I'm, 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 um,
any, any families in Danvers. And really, the meetings are open to anyone, so you don't have to have a child in special ed to go to get information. It is a great resource. We're lucky to have it here in Danvers, so I would encourage folks to, you know, like it on Facebook, or go to a meeting, or reach out if you have any questions. Thank you, Mary. Policy?
I think we've done it.
We've covered that.
Yep.
And Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee?
Sure. So, in celebration of Gay Pride Month, there's a raising of the gay pride flag Thursday, May 30th, at 6:30 PM in front of Town Hall, and there are refreshments as well, so.
And we'll have some of our Danvers High School students, they annually attend, so we're working with Susan Fletcher. We'll have students there, and we'll also, we meet with the education subcommittee from our Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, and we have that later this month.
Great. 6:30 PM is a popular time, apparently, to start events, so I think it's the default unless someone says otherwise.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeff. Minutes?
Madam Chairman, I move to approve and release the minutes from the April 8th, 2019 regular meeting.
Second.
Discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Budget and donations?
Before you have your monthly budget report for the month of April, you'll see that we've started to identify where we may have some positive results from operations, some money that went unspent this year. As we've been working, and you've heard the town manager, Mr. Barth, to speak about the overall town budget picture, as the Smith School comes online, and we continue to deal with some of our other financial challenges. In this particular year, the amount of money which we have in free cash at the end of the year will be very important, so we are working on balancing, having a positive results from operations to turn back to the town and maintaining our healthy reserve accounts, and finding where that balance is, that we can be a team player to that overall budget picture and set ourselves up for financial stability still for years to come. Also, just like to, again, recognize the Danvers Veteran Council, as well as Rotary, for their donation of the flag.
Thank you. Personnel?
You'll see mostly leaves of absences as we end, towards the end of the year, as well as a few resignations at the end of the school year for staff that are going on to other opportunities for next year.
Okay. And that appears to be it on the agenda. Our next meeting? June 10th. June 10th.
We have town meeting this Monday.
Oh, yes, Monday at 7:30 at, right here, Danvers High School.